All right, we will go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. We will begin with any adjustments to the agenda if there are any, if not, motion to approve. Okay, motion and second to approve the agenda, all of those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? All right, we will move on to the communication items and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in blissful liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everybody in attendance tonight. We'll remind everyone that the mission statement of ESAC County is ESAC County empowers all students to become productive, responsible citizens of an ever-changing global society. We'll take a moment here if there's any public input on non-agenda items.
I'd just like to say thank you for storing the public input to these meetings.
Anyone else? Okay, we will move on then. Board Secretary John Henry?
Yeah, we'll do the financial report at this part of the meeting. It's attached, it's preliminary cash balances for June 30th. Not a lot of change from last month, or from May's report. I think Jeff plans on reviewing the unspent balance report in September. And that will give us probably a similar picture, but I'm gonna call it more important, Jeff.
Definitely.
Definitely more important than this one, so. Questions or comments?
And when we review that, the activity, as soon as we know for sure where we end up with expenditures this year, we'll plug that information into a Excel spreadsheet calculator. And then I'll ask the board for some input, so you can start thinking about what do you think the state supplemental aid's going to be next year? That's one of your inputs. Secondly, how do you think expenditures are gonna grow by? Or decrease by, so some percentage there. Then the third piece that we need to know is enrollment. Okay, so maybe by September we'll have a little idea what our enrollment looks like. Although the official count of dates October 1st, so we won't have an official enrollment number. But you can project, is it gonna go up five, down five, just some things like that. We'll do that for the next four or five years. And then once we throw those projections in, you'll be able to see what's happening to unspent. So Beth, I will need some kind of an optima in the screen then that we can display this on, no, next month. So we panic.
I'm ready.
That way people in the audience and the board, everybody can see based off of those projections. Then after we do that, what I will do is I will share that tool with you as a board. So if you wanna build around with it and put your own what-ifs in it, you can put your own projections into it. And then as I've talked with some community members, I'd love to be able to start meeting with some community members and just sharing it in different groups.
I don't believe we had any correspondence tonight.
Nope.
Any of the non-ESAs?
No ESSA reports tonight.
Okay. TLC reports? Okay, we'll move on to administrative reports. I believe there were reports attached, but we're kind of starting.
We did onboarding a few teachers today. They started off the central office with Beth going through some technology stuff. Moved on to John and the central office secretaries going over, you know, things like insurance, pay periods, how to do purchase orders, that type of thing. Jeff talked to them about responsibilities as an employee, as a teacher. TLC met with them and their mentors and talked about instructional framework, what good instruction looks like according to our district. And then they did a lunch thing and then in the afternoon they met with the building principals. I thought it was a very, very productive day for that new staff. So I think their minds were a little full by the end of the day, but I thought it was very rich in what they got today.
How many new staff were there?
We had five new middle school teachers and...
And I have two.
Two, so on. But rich conversations and getting them off on the right foot, I think is a great value.
And Brent, they were all new to the district, so some had the experience, some did not have experience, so it was just new to the district that we did this onboarding. And really you need to say, your TLC coaches and your administrative team, they coordinated the set of the day for his activities. And John and I, we just had to do our part in communicating with them. But it's the first time I've ever been through an onboarding activity with the staff. And we might consider doing that at some of my other districts that we work in.
Thank you for taking the time to organize that. I do know it was a concern that came out of that communication conversation last spring, so I appreciate that.
Just with mine, I want to make sure to highlight just the shout-outs to the people that have been working over the summer to get buildings ready. Those staff members and teachers that have been in for meetings that are, you know, not on contract time, so appreciate their time and their efforts getting in and getting things ready. And for registration, those that helped run smoothly. One thing that I didn't get in the board report in time was that, I just got the call this morning from the Howard Center. They asked if they could donate some educational games to the elementary schools, if they could purchase some things. And we said, "Of course, sure." Well, tomorrow they're gonna come to our in-service morning and come and present us with what they purchased for us. So we appreciate them supporting us and helping us in our... They're focused on math, they try to find games that are focused on math, so trying to help support us in that area. We appreciate that.
High school, just real quick, we had orientation last week. We brought in all of our freshmen on Monday and sophomores on Tuesday, juniors on Wednesday, and seniors on Thursday. And something we've done for the last several years about just kinda getting them ready for school, overhand with changes, they get a chance to change their schedules. My man Miller talks to them about their transcripts, making sure that they got all the classes that they need. If they did their senior year, make sure they're not missing a solitaire class or something like that, that could create a real problem for them during graduation. During the freshman meeting, we have Ken Muthor came in and talked to the students about school permits, what they can and cannot do, because we have a lot of our students that can obtain school permits throughout the year. So it's just a good time for them to kinda get thinking about school. And so the attendance was a little down than what it's been to pass, would I would say, but it was still pretty good, so we're pretty pleased. We'll have a makeup session for those that missed orientation the first day of school after school. They'll meet, put me here in the library and we'll get everybody else on board for orientation too.
So that's sort of mandatory, Kevin?
Well, yes, yes, they have to attend one or something either during the, before school starts or during school, yes. Yep, yep, that way they hear all, they all hear the same best side. No, that's okay, that's okay. And then the other thing I put in there, we just, as they're working on the MTSS yet, on Wednesday of this week, we'll take our teachers looking at a specific part of the condition of learning survey and take a look at kinda five areas that it focuses on. All students nine through 12 took the survey last year. And it's divided up into five parts, physical safety, emotional safety, adult student relationships, student-to-student relationships, and expectations and boundaries. So there's a lot of good information that we can obtain and begin to dissect through about kinda what our students see and what they're doing in the confines of our building. So Marina Aubrey, Aubrey, excuse me, from Prentice A has been a real key person in this and kinda getting this set up on the path to success for that. So that's high school report.
One other quick thing that I think you all can appreciate too, that I forgot to mention, I did meet with all my staff members individually and just asked them three questions that they didn't have any idea it was gonna ask. But I asked number one, when you think about your district, think about ESAC district, what makes you most proud? And so I think something you should know is that they do feel supported by each other and from the community, that would be overall theme. So I thought that was something for you all to hear, you know, the community, everybody, they really feel supported.
The only two pieces of information that I have for tonight would be, as Kevin was talking, one of the changes, if a student wants a school permit, I have a meeting, or Kevin has a meeting with those students. And then we reviewed some rules together. They have to have a parent in attendance to get a school permit. But one of the very first questions that I asked is you have to be involved in some kind of extracurricular activity. I figure if you don't have something outside of regular hours, you can ride the normal bus, or there has to be an extreme extenuating circumstance before I would allow that. So I've met with, I don't know, seven, eight families, Kevin's probably met with a near same number, but it's just a practice that I've done for many, many years. Then I just gave you a little bit of information about SMART goals. If at some point in time we want to get into the development of some SMART goals for us as a board, it simply is an acronym for specific goals that are measurable, attainable, realistic, and that we can put a timeline on. And so as you, Jackie, did some meetings with staff last spring, you know, maybe there's an old ground communication that we want to build. There may be a goal around financial improvements. We could develop two or three things that we think we could work on as a staff. So as we have more time, we'll look at the development of those goals, if it's something the board would like to pursue.
If there's anything else for administrative reports, we will move on to discussion items. And first item on there, I'll let Jeff take the lead, resolution for long-term facilities plan and some information on enrollment.
Okay, so there's two parts to it. One is I've put together an actual resolution for you to look at, there's no action gonna be taken on this tonight. But in it, I have two things that I would like you to consider. One would be a timeline that we're going to take a vote for facilities. And if you want to put in moving to three or two buildings. In the resolution that I've shared before you, it states two buildings. So those would be two conversations that we'll talk about in a minute. Then the other piece, you need to look at a little spreadsheet if you've got something that looks like this. As we've been going through trying to fill positions, here at the very end, we've ended up having to transfer some staff to cover some of our special ed positions. Therefore, you may have had four sections in some of those classes, but those numbers that I'm gonna give you right now, as I read them across, those are current sections with numbers of students. So for example, in kindergarten, we currently have four sections. SAC Center, 20 and 21 students in each section. And in the Wall Lake Center, 15 students in each section. In first grade, we only have two sections currently. SAC has 26, Wall Lake has 23, I think there's one. In the second grade, we have three sections, SAC Building with 27 students, and both Wall Lake sections have 14 in them. And again, these are approximate numbers, we still may get some enrollment if people haven't registered yet. Third grade, we have three sections. In the SAC facility, 14 and 15. Wall Lake facility, there are 22 students. Then in fourth grade, we have three sections with 14 and 16 in a section at SAC. And at Wall Lake, we have 28 students in one section over there. And then the next column, if we could go to some type of balanced section, so other than kindergarten, if we had three sections in everything, but we were able to shift kids somehow, or move teachers, or do something with grades, you can see our class sizes would range from 17 to 19 students per section, that's what that's trying to say. And that's maintaining four sections in kindergarten, three sections in the other grades. So right now, we have 15 total teachers in those. In a perfect world, I don't think it would be hurt to have one more teacher to have three sections, but as I've told Sarah, I'm not inclined to add one teacher and then get another misbalance of students somehow at one site or the other. Follow, everybody follows what I'm trying to say with that then? So I'm wondering, and I don't know how people would react to this, but if we visited with Phil and we took kids either from Lakeview or for Auburn, or some kids from SAC, how would you feel about us trying to balance those at least some way so we could get closer? And I'm saying we get exactly equal balances, but I do think, I think we've got quite a bit of disparity between our classes. It's another problem with our facilities, the way we're trying to run it currently.
Would you want to try and do that this year?
I would love to still try to do that this year, but how much, which is worse? Are we gonna get coming more?
I think parents will freak out if you try to do that.
Compared to if I were a parent and I had 28 kids in my class?
I think they've already figured out where the kids are going, and to change that right now would be hard, but I'm not saying I'm against it.
What if we voluntarily asked parents if they would consider it?
And then that's a good idea.
And so we would have to figure some transportation issues and we'd have to see if we could make it work logistically, but I think you've got teachers who are going a little bit stir-crazy, and they're comparing also. If I've got 28 kids and my cohort's got 14? So I'm hearing support, Mrs. Pivel, to see if we can voluntarily contact some. We'd have to work with Phil, see what it would mean for transportation.
Do we need transportation, we might through that transition kindergarten? Do we have students coming already?
Up to SAC, from, yes, I believe, that's the only place transitional kindergarten is held, as I understand it.
I just didn't know if we have students coming up already for that.
And what Phil talked about, we must have some kind of a bus that goes to Auburn somehow. And maybe some of those Auburn kids, they may end up at SAC, maybe end up at Wall Lake, I don't know how we split that, but I think, wasn't it fourth grade, John, that we could, maybe, or Sarah, we could possibly get six, four or six kids from the Auburn area? And so again, it wouldn't be perfectly balanced, but we could possibly get it closer.
Well, I would think that the, that the fourth grade Wall Lake Elementary people would be, I would assume they would probably want, it would make sense to me that they would try and get their, some of their students out of class 28. And then looking at the other end...
Second grade.
The second grade SAC Elementary might want to try and get down to Wall Lake for, basically same thing, same numbers.
And kindergarten's not terrible, if we could move one or two, you know, we might be able to get a little closer, but those aren't double in size, you're going from 14 to 28.
How are you going to stop somebody from Wall Lake, or somebody from SAC, or Lakeview, or whatever, that says, "I wanna send a kid to SAC because I don't like the Wall Lake teacher," or vice versa, or whatever? Or you know that, maybe you can open that big mouth, kind of worms?
I think our approach is, we're trying to balance numbers, it's not because you like or dislike somebody, but if you're, I'm just gonna use the fourth grade, if you're in that section of 28, and you're willing to allow us to try to balance to move 28 to SAC, that's the approach that we're gonna take. So if I hear support for us to try to work something out on a volunteer basis, then the other part is the actual resolution that I've drafted. What do you like, not like about that? Is it a step that we need to take, don't want to take?
Well, my opinion is, at some point in time, we're gonna get to two buildings. Because we have to. How we get there is something that we have to do before the election? Is this something that will continue through the election?
That's totally up to you. As I kinda said before, Chris, whatever decision this board makes, you're not really probably gonna be able to hold the next board to it. So the longer we wait on the decision, it makes it harder for us administratively to figure out, because I think I've heard some of you, a transition plan. How are we gonna make sure our facilities can hold, what are we gonna have to do? If we're gonna have to do, use some saved money to build on somewhere to be able to do that, all right? So then we need next year to do the building possibly. But so we need a transition plan and we need some time to develop that. But I also don't want to do a lot of work in the next board change.
Well, I was just thinking, Evan, if we say, "Let's do this," and you guys go and do all this work, the next board comes in and says, "Whoa, wait a minute, that's not what we want."
I don't know how to change that.
It's kind of a catch point too, so. I mean, I don't have a problem with making a decision before the election.
Well, at this point, if we approve this resolution in September, you really only have one month, October, to make a decision, unless we just say we're not gonna do the resolution, we're gonna make it. My idea of passing this is then we can communicate to the public, here's when the board's acting, gonna act on this, and here's the plan that we're looking towards going to two or three facilities at least. Get that out in the public so we can make our vote on whatever night we're gonna make that vote on.
Whatever night being before or after.
Correct. I mean, the election is on November 5th, I believe, that first two, so it'll be November 5th. And then because we're in multiple counties, the canvassing process is gonna, SAC County is the lead county, the head county, so they'll canvas, but then the littler counties will filter into that, so it takes a little bit longer before the canvassing will be done now. So I don't know, would we say, what's the November board meeting?
We're on the 21st.
I would almost think that that should be done by then. On the 21st, you could probably have your organizational meeting with your new board. If it's not done, then it won't happen until September, or until December.
I think we should try and proceed with the work, because, I mean, we've all spent a lot of time on this and see if we can reach a solution, because if we wait, I mean, it's gonna be January, February, and we're pushing, I mean, if we have these same issues, classroom sizes, again, I don't want to, you know, whoever's sitting here before school starts again, if there's things that we can do to plan ahead and work through that, and then also financially, I mean, the longer we wait, you know, the more money comes in play. So I guess I just feel like we should either approve this resolution in September and then do the vote in October, or whenever anybody...
What's, what's a typical timeframe to have a construction company give you bids and everything set for, like following year, six months?
Probably, I'd say that's a very fair estimate. Then depending on how much construction, how long it'll take. And then working towards that long-range plan of, and I think that's what I've heard some of you guys say, you know, we don't want to build something and wish we'd have put it here, how do we make it connect in the facilities that we currently have, using the best information that we have today? So I think some of the long-range plan is demolition of parts of buildings, for sure. Here we can see part of it that's gonna go.
Down on what are the timeframe, anybody wants to do? We can do whatever.
Were you okay with us doing a resolution? I'm using that as a communication piece, that was my whole intent of it, just to help people understand that we're gonna take a vote on a certain issue.
Because the resolution doesn't really say what the actual plan is.
No, yeah. I'm just giving you reasons why I think we need to get to this decision.
I think the more we communicate it, the better, so I have no, I think it's a good idea to do a resolution, so.
Was there a resolution later in the back that I saw?
There is one, well, there's two, one for revenue purpose statement and this one that should be attached to that day. Some of them maybe have it printed, I think Brent's got a copy of it.
That's what we're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Well, then I'm gonna put that on as an action item, a resolution, so we can at least make a decision, we can debate next month when we're gonna take a vote, whether it's in October, November, December. And we can get that publicized and communicated. And then the second part is, Sarah, you're gonna have a lot of work, but let's see if we can get a few volunteers. You haven't slept yet anyway.
Who needs sleep?
It's overrated.
All right, if there's nothing more on that, we will move on to the action items. First one up is the approval of the consent agenda.
In fact, you should have the minutes from July, some bills, keyboard policies, and a list of propane goods. And the recommend, since we have two propane goods that were equal, Star Energy and Elspeth Run, about 89 cents. With them, Star Energy feels happy with Star Energy and would like me to recommend Star Energy. That's where we're at, action items. Any questions?
I have one on the safe fund, John.
Okay.
The central lock and key.
Yep. Jeff, if you recall, in the spring, on some of our summer projects was some of those safe zones, not even call them safe zones, but in some of our buildings, and that's the company that's doing a lot of our electronic locks. So that's some of that work being done.
Okay.
Any other question or comments on consent items? I have a second motion.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second to approve the consent items, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the...
So that was a motion with Star Energy?
I'm sorry?
Next up is the upgrading of SAC Elementary Building, you're right.
And John's been working, I think, with Carol Controls on this, I'll let him lead, but as I understand it, our equipments, if it breaks, it's obsolete to the point where we're not gonna find parts.
Right. The controls, not the boilers themselves, or anything, and this is for the SAC Elementary Building, but the controls that control the boilers and the air conditioning down the middle of the building are somewhere in the 15 to 18-year-old category. Parts are no longer available for them, they're working fine now. But if they fail in January, when they need to have school, we will not be able to find parts, we're gonna have to replace them all. And so this would tend to be a proactive move to get the, get the controls upgraded this fall when the weather's a little better. And obviously, kind of what you want to, etc., but...
What's the timeframe to get, to do it in the winter if we have to, to get the parts to do it down?
I did not, yeah, I didn't ask that question, yeah. I would assume they would, they'd batch us together somehow, I mean, they, they're not gonna make this close, the building's still good about that, but, um, it's something we would definitely want to do sooner, it's gotta later, even if we didn't do it now this fall, it'd probably be one of our first items in the spring that we'd have on your list, so.
How much was it again, John?
It's 13,925.
14,000.
Yep, and there was one other thing.
It includes the first year plan of services, yeah, 14,000.
These controls are the controls that will be on the new air conditioner that's being installed right now in the gymnasium, so, that was the other part of the, the whole on one system.
And Carol Control Systems is the one that we're adding to all the work?
Yeah, we're doing it. They're currently doing the controls, they're not building.
John, I'd recommend moving forward with this, but I would have one question as I listen tonight. Let's say we decide we're gonna add on to the SAC Building. Could we talk to Carol Controls, because I'd need to put something in place, and they say, "Well, no, that's not gonna be big enough down the road." And so get a little bit of input from them, or I don't know, throw $14,000 away if we have to start from scratch?
Can you ask those questions and bring this back next one? Still get us before, I mean, see what the weather...
I don't think these can get to this in 30 days after 30 days.
Kayla, would you ask that question?
Definitely. Anything else you can think of on that? We just want to make sure we're covered going forward, right?
Okay. John, that will move on to the next item, the approval of interim management agreement with SAC.
Is that with the REC Center?
28, yeah, 28 is the community center, no changes that I'm aware of.
I'd recommend approval.
I'll move. Second.
Motion in the second to approve the agreement, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to the next item, the approval of contract with Council of Services with the DCAT grant application.
So this is before, um, came on board, but Molly Scott, I think, had been working with DCAT to write a grant to give us services. So this would provide twenty hours worth of counseling for students within our district per week. Uh, they would be an employee of counseling services and not our employee. And, um, I think that the principals have met with them, uh, feeling like the greatest need might be at the elementary to start, uh, is what I'm hearing. Uh, so I would recommend that we would, uh, go forth with that grant opportunity. Again, it's at zero cost unless we would ever get to the point we wanted to add more time at some point down the road.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the contract with Council of Services with the DCAT, DCAT grant, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You wrote it, yeah. Alright, uh, next up is the legislative priorities.
Uh, annual, school districts have the ability to list up to four priorities with the Iowa Association of School Boards. So then there's a link of twenty or thirty different priorities that they have. I just simply have included some as examples. You can take any of the four that you would like. Um, but as an example, I think mental health is a need, uh, so I would like you to consider that. The calendar, I'm kinda lukewarm on that one. I don't like that the law says the first day of school is the twenty-third. So next year, for example, the twenty-third's gonna be on a Saturday, so you'll either start school on Saturday or on the following Monday. Uh, number twenty is the state supplemental aid. Certainly, I would like them to set that early and as high as possible. And then I've always hated unfunded mandates, but I doubt we'd ever get rid of that, but that's one of my priorities. So if you have others that you like, um, they're not any hierarchy order, we just can mark up the four.
One of the things that I wrote down on mine is number fourteen, um, I have for years thought that it's a little bit ridiculous that the state gives schools millions and millions and millions of dollars every year. And we turn around and give Blue Cross Blue Shield millions and millions and millions of dollars, and some people don't even use it. So, I mean, the state has a, an insurance arm, so why can't we use that? Why shouldn't schools and cities and counties use that? And, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield can go to some other state.
Yeah. Which one would you throw out if you liked that one?
What?
Which one of those other four would?
Oh, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't necessarily throw any out.
You can only list four, so I'm saying, so one of them we'd have to eliminate, which is fine with me.
So I had a couple that were different.
Yeah, that's fine.
Maybe we should talk about some, and if there's some that are better than others, and, you know, I don't know. Uh, I mean, I like, I like number twenty and number twenty-six also. Uh, definitely number seven, that's something that we see every day, so, um, and then I, I started number nineteen too. Um, not sure that that's.
Well, I don't have the list. What's nineteen?
Uh, school funding policy.
Mm-hmm. I thought, I debated on that one for quite some time.
You know, the one thing that I thought was, uh, it equalizes per pupil funding, and we talked about that a little bit, being a rural school. And so, I mean, that's a big deal, but is it big enough that that's something that we should mark down?
Well, even though I don't, I, I wanna make my voice for unfunded mandates, that's never probably gonna end. So your nineteenth maybe got a better chance than twenty-six.
Yeah, that's what I, so what's, what do you think about fourteen? Is that something that you've ever thought about?
Mm-mm, but I think it's a good point, yeah. I mean, I talked to John earlier today.
I don't know if you can get it done by next year.
I talked to John earlier today. We spend about a million dollars a year on insurance. It's a large number. Not that it would go from a million to zero, obviously, but we could say.
Well, anything you say would be a bit portion of that. So, um, I'm hearing possibly seven, fourteen, nineteen, and twenty. Like I said, the calendar's more of a nuisance to me anymore, but.
Sure they're smart enough to change that, aren't they?
No.
I don't know that they will either. But I think the ones that you've mentioned, Chris, have more, well, certainly health insurance has a bigger financial impact on us. Setting SSA's got a financial impact on us. Uh, so I think you're, we're picking topics that are more pertinent.
I'm just throwing them out there, see what everybody else thinks, I don't know. I'm probably replacing the unfunded balance with anything that gives, or unfunded mandates, cause those are just gonna keep coming, so. And that's just like the calendar, it's, it's not very smart to do something like that, but.
So I'm hearing seven, fourteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh, if somebody makes a motion to approve that, I'll go into ISB tomorrow or the next day, and I'll list those as ESAC's resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the legislative priorities as listed, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, next up is the approval of a plan for donation of electronic sign at the high school.
So I think Amanda, you're the, the speaker for this, but you were contacted by a couple of families in memory of some of our students that were killed. And they would like to donate money to place an electronic sign here at the high school. It's my understanding, all costs, except for the reoccurring cost of electricity to run the signs, would be the districts in the future. But they would do everything from fundraising to set up, to get the sign going for us, then we would take over.
Correct.
So, and maybe you don't know this yet, but, uh, what, what about maintenance and, and, uh, you know, if something happens to the sign, does that become our cost?
It's my understanding that they're going to have a fund to take care of those items.
So by policy, the board's exposed, is, uh, supposed to accept donations like that, and once the donation's received, it certainly becomes the board's, um, right to use it. Do they have a timeline, do you know? Are they still thinking like this fall? Are they thinking a year?
I think it's in the next eighteen months, is my understanding.
So we just need another motion to accept the.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second to accept the electronic sign, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And Amanda, you'll communicate down there. Thank you.
Please tell them thank you also. That's quite an amazing thing.
Alright, next up on the list is the approval of the transportation sharing agreements.
Okay, uh, school districts can get into an agreement with other neighboring school districts. As I've communicated, I've known it as the two-mile rule. Where you would allow a bus to tran, to come into your district. Um, I have allowed this in other districts that I've worked in, if the other district reciprocate. If they won't, then I haven't done it. So there's a, you know, you could do it with Arleva, you could do it with South Central Calhoun. I don't know, I suppose Newell to the north. But you can pick and choose which districts you wanna allow, so you don't have to have the same parameters for each district. Uh, so anyway, I, I guess I'm asking, I think we've been requested, would you open up to allow us in this situation? I'm only asking between Arleva and ESAC, although today I did receive a call from a, a family from our district here at ESAC. Who lives close to South Central Calhoun, and they would like the bus to maybe work something out for them. Um, they live, uh, north of Yetter. And, um, they would like the kids to come back to ESAC County. Mike, even if you approve this, the other thing that you have to be caution about, cautionary about. Um, we still have to make time on a bus. And so if you, if you approve it, and it's going to make it where our, our buses run along, you may want to think twice about. Or you'd still say, we're gonna meet you somewhere because we're nowhere close to that area. So if you approve it, you don't have to say, we're gonna add ten miles or ten minutes to a route, because we can't make time then. And one of the things that John and I asked Phil this year was to try to absorb a route, and he has done that for us, so that means our routes are gonna be a little longer. Okay? Um, but I'm not opposed to doing it. If you're open to doing it. Uh, I know in this situation, Arleva has communicated, uh, they would support this decision with ESAC if ESAC wants to do it, so they would reciprocate.
Is it a year by year?
Yes, it's an annual thing.
I know when I was on just the SAC tour, I, I know we allowed it, I'm, I'm not sure all the time or whatever, but I, I know, matter of fact, I assume we were doing it here still. Even though it wasn't brought up to me or I didn't ask about it, so. I, for me, if, if the other district is, when they reciprocate, then I think it's fine.
So would, would your motion be just with Arleva at this point, or do you want to consider other districts?
Well, I guess if they have to ask, then they can have, the next district can ask. I'm saying it'd just be with our, our motion.
The only reason I ask Brent is that you have a family from E- from South Central who would like you to consider if we can make transportation to come over here. So that, it doesn't matter to me.
Well, I thought you said we only got asked by, by you, now you're saying South Central.
This parent just asked me today. It was another parent today.
So we can talk about that too?
Pardon?
So we can talk about that.
Sure, it just, the motion would be, are you gonna allow the transportation agreement with any school district? So I don't care which district.
So right now, you're saying, Brent, are we running on South Central? I'd second that motion.
There's a motion in a second to approve agreements with Arleva and South Central Calhoun, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'll let the superintendent of schools know.
Yeah, we'll hear. He wouldn't be sitting here, would he?
Alright, and the last ac- action item is the approval of the school infrastructure resolution of election.
Okay, this was a late add to the agenda. Um, what this would be, it would be asking the voters to renew our one-cent sales tax. Uh, it's called a revenue purpose statement. So when you consolidate it at some point in time, I'm assuming you had the voters approve this. Okay? And so, and I think you go out to twenty thirty-one currently.
Yeah.
So it's whatever the end of the, the original law was. There's a couple of reasons why I'd like you to consider sending this to voters. One, we have an election happening in November, so it's not another special election that we're paying for. We're already gonna be paying for school board election. I'm not saying that they're gonna get this for free, but it's not an additional election cost of, for a full election. Two, if we decide to borrow against Save at some point in time to do some of these building construction. We could then get the law to be out to twenty fifty-one, so it gives us a longer window that we could borrow against the funds. Thirdly, uh, there are some new, um, benefits to the new law that you would also obtain by approving this. One is if you join some kind of a, I, I would call it a, a charter school. But if you have some kind of a venture with a community college, a neighboring school district, you could use the funds for some facilities. Uh, that's never been allowed before. Then the fourth reason, which I think schools have done, but it has expanded, so Jay, you talked about some safety things you questioned about a bill. It's expanded that you could do safety within, um, the use of Save dollars. So there are multiple reasons why you could consider doing it. If it doesn't pass, the, the old revenue purpose that you have is still in place, so you don't lose it. Um, it just extends it. It's not a new tax. It doesn't increase anybody. You're getting the one-cent sales tax. Um, school districts can decide when they're gonna do this. Uh, I just think it's a good time to do it now. Law's changed, we've got an election, let's pass it. And so, uh, we have to have the resolution to the auditor, uh, by the twentieth of September, if I remember right. If you felt you needed to wait, we could still do this on the nineteenth, but John would then need to communicate, uh, to the courthouse that, and we'd have to have it the next day by noon. This just gives us a little more time to get all the paperwork done and get it up there. Or we could have a special meeting to do.
Sounds to me like we should just do it now.
I agree.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
So this, this would take a roll call vote.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Alright, uh, personnel items.
There's one resignation, um, and this resignation is per communication with Mike Fisher as our girls' basketball coach. He has verbally, uh, communicated to our athletic director that he is resigning girls' basketball. I would recommend approval of that resignation. So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to accept Mike, Mike Fisher's resignation as basketball coach, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Uh, we have some contracts, uh, mainly for some volunteer coaches and some associates. Um, I don't know if there anybody else besides?
This is complete now. There's three associates at the end. I forgot to put their per hour rate. The rate's seventy-five per hour for those three. And then the bus driver, Ben Wise, is, what are our bus driver rates?
All abstained from the volunteer vote.
Motion to approve the contracts?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the contracts as listed, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
And I don't know if you've done volunteer before, Jay, but my feeling is by having the board approve that, it protects the school and that person for liability reasons, that's why.
I have a full understanding of what you want to vote here, and so.
Yes, I just, I did not, we've done it in the past.
Yeah, we have not.
Okay. And then concussion training, I still need to get tally, but the board's supposed to approve that unless we got a list. Did you get a list, John?
No.
Okay, so at some point, the board's gotta approve, but any coach has to take concussion training prior to their season starting. And it's a pretty stiff penalty if they don't. You don't get to go to playoffs if I understand the rule right, so, uh, you wanna make sure our coaches have taken concussion training. So then, other than if you have board reports on the September agenda, I've got the unspent balance, we'll go through that, resolution on facilities. Uh, those will be two items that'll be on the agenda. Um, there may be, uh, I don't know, I call it old. You, you might, you'll name who your papers are, who your depositories are, some of those kind of items will take place still in September. We won't do the organizational meeting, which you normally would have done in September, because that's when you do the president, vice president and some of those things.
When you put on there the HVAC for SAC city?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we'll have some, we'll have mentors for our new teachers that are first and second year, and I'll get those lined up for next one. Still hiring associates, so I have one or two more of those probably with contacts here.
If we get an associate hired before the board, can we get him started, or do they have to wait?
We've started him in the past.
You started, okay.
After the motion, Bernard?
Thank you.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
What they?